Meeting will now come to order. Please stand for a moment of silence and we're standing. Please keep in mind the police officers this week that were shot in the line of duty. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Mr. Reba.
Mr. Benomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Mr. Fume.
Here.
Mrs. Kay.
Here.
Mr. John.
Here.
Mr. Maholik.
Present.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Scarsella.
Here.
And Mr. Zola.
Here.
The announcements of executive session held as follows. November 15, 2016, special education litigation case and personnel. November 22, 2016, litigation and personnel. Dr. Butler, public announcements and recognition.
Thank you, Mr. John. I'd first of all like to introduce our student representative, serving as a liaison of the board, so to speak, Hope McKinney. Welcome, Hope. Hope is a... Hope is also president, Mr. John, of our student council and a very active member. And I was recalling a very special hit that Hope got last year in our quarterfinal game, softball. It probably would have been out of the park in most parks, but certainly a key hit to our victory. And I hope we get... We hope you get that... We hope you get that sling-off soon so that we get you ready for softball season. Welcome, Hope. Mr. John, I'd also like to recognize one of our school directors this evening. The legacy of school board service is firmly embedded in the history of our nation and its commitment to public education. Pennsylvania is one of the founding colonies of the United States, clearly established the concept of schooling in its first constitution in 1776. Later, the Free School Act of 1834 marked the first permanent state interest in public education and the birth of the locally-elected school board. School directors today have a challenging job in our complex society, giving more and more of their personal time to this non-paid volunteer effort. Since 1983, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association has been recognizing the contributions of dedicated local school directors with long-term service. With that in mind, Mr. John, we do have one of our directors who has given not four, not eight, but 12 years of service to the Hazelton Area School District Board of Directors, and that is Mr. Anthony Benomo. I'd like to congratulate him at this time.
Dr. Butler? You brought me to tears. Thank you.
He had no idea it was 12 years.
I think it's more like 14, Doc.
Congratulations, Tony. And I'd like to just mention one other really great experience I had this week. And I was at Freeland Elementary Middle School and I got to not participate in, but observe an activity, parent-involvement activity. And it's with fifth graders and it's patterned after the TV show, "Do You Think You're Smarter Than a Fifth Grader"? Is that the correct title? And, boy, what a great activity, Mr. John. Lots of parents involved. The parents and students had fun. I think the students enjoyed it most when they made fun of the parents' mistakes. But it was just a great activity and a pleasure to be there. And I... That's just one example of our students... Excuse me, of our schools inviting the parents in for quality activity. It was educational and fun. Thank you, Mr. John. That's it, I believe.
Okay, at this time, we'll accept public comments and board items... agendas only. Number 39 has been removed. Number 39 has been removed. Mr. Fume?
Dr. Childs?
My name is Robert Childs. I'm a resident of Hazel Township and I'm privileged to speak to you, the board, this evening. Just a quick update to add to your list of people or organizations that managed to provide something good for the school district. The diversity night that was done last Friday night over at H.I.P. It involved the two small schools, the Arthur Street and Hazel Hill. Certainly deserves mention and some sort of commendation, if you would. I would like to speak to items number 11 and 13 and maybe others. We're authorizing graduate students to perform various studies on our students. And I think it's a very good idea. The question I would ask with regards to 11 and 13 in particular, where you're talking about developing language skills, is whether or not these graduate students have been informed of the fact that some 40% of our students do not have Internet access. So if there are programs... You can't tell from what's written here as whether there are programs involved using the Internet that you're going to be biasing. This study is going to be heavily biased and it needs to be looked at in that direction. The other thing, though, that I would invite the school board to take a look at is the assignments, the homework assignments, on the Internet from our current teachers. I know many of the teachers, even at the Castle and places like that where the Internet access is pretty darn slim, they will assign things like Study Island, and that's not acceptable. You're wasting the students' time and you're wasting the ability to educate your students. And I would like to suggest to the board that until there is adequate Internet access at home for the large majority of our students, that the assignment of homework that involves the Internet be curtailed. Use the computers in the classroom, teach kids how to use computers, teach them the skills, but don't assign homework that many of them just simply can't complete. That's a waste. And the board, I think, should act on that, given the statistics that Dr. Briggs presented to us at the committee meetings the other day, that 40% of our students do not have Internet access beyond the school district itself. I will take also one moment just to mention, I've been something of a bulldog on items like number 64 since I was on the board and watched the abuse of the medical sabbaticals. Now, not medical... I understand it's different from a medical leave. It's a different item altogether. But medical sabbaticals, I've pushed very hard to make sure the superintendent has looked at those carefully and made absolutely sure that they're not being abused. Just a comment.
I can speak, Dr. Childs, in regards to this... Well, all of them on the agenda, but in particular, this one.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fume?
Leanne Mateo.
My, it's just a comment on... Just on the record, I see we're hiring again more teachers. I mean, we know my stance on this. We didn't have money to hire 18 teachers for kindergarten, but we surpassed that number. And I'm pretty sure that's not budgeted in. The budget is what I'm told every time. So we're well beyond going into our funds and just feel that saving money. This is one of the things, the kindergarten and the transportation. And I know this will be for another day, but the whole middle school thing. I mean, we're not running a good track record. And I just wanted to state that, again, hiring teachers that we didn't have money for before, but now we do. So, to keep our numbers down, but just hurts that it wasn't good enough to have kindergarten kids there all day, but we need them now.
I don't believe these are new positions.
No.
These are replacements. A retirement and a resignation, so...
Well, it didn't state that. It just said a new hire. So that's what I see, and that's why I'm commenting.
But they're not new positions. They're replacing people at left.
Okay. I wasn't aware.
In fact, they're replacing people at a lower salary.
Right.
Almost half.
Okay. It's just misconstrued in the paper. It didn't say that it's a...
We'll do a better job on that next time.
Thanks.
That's it.
Thank you.
Approve board minutes for regular board meeting, October 27. Some move.
Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
On the minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Treasuries report for September and October 2016?
Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
On the treasures report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Mr... Or Dr. Butler?
Curriculum and instruction, approve items 1 through 16.
Some move.
Second.
Questions, comments, and any items 1 through 16? Mr. Reba, roll call.
Numbers 1 through 16, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Special education, E.S.L., and alternative education approving items 17 through 21.
Some move.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 17 through 21, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Security and careers center approve items 22 through 24. With one motion.
Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 22 through 24, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Transportation, approve items 25 and 26.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 25 through 26, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Nutrition, approve items 27 through 29.
Second. Questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 27 through 29, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Student activities, athletics, and extracurricular approving items 30 through 33. With one motion.
Some move.
Second. Questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 30 through 33, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on 40. I'm sorry, what was?
30 to 33.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll be no on 40 next time.
It's a long 12 years, Mr. Benomo.
Ayes have it, motion passes.
I'm so consumed with...
Technology, number 34, recommend board approve the use of Remind 101 as a district's...
Some move.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Number 34, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Facilities and capital projects, approve items 35 through 42, minus number 39.
Comments?
Second.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank our director, Mr... What's his name? Where is he? Oh, Andre, I'm sorry, Andre. Thank you for putting this in place, number 38. I think this is something that is going to be a benefit to our buildings and grounds and certainly to you. I know Mr. Zola and Mr. Benomo helped out with this. And I think we've got three tremendous people in there that can... If anybody can do this, it's probably these three gentlemen, because this is going to be a tough task. But you certainly have done a great job holding the fort down, and we thank you.
Great job, Andre.
Bobby, just on that, this is going to replace an administrator that was, you know, high salary, benefits and all. And by doing this, it's just raising a few dollars an hour to salaries and saving that supervisor. So, good job, bud.
Good job.
I would like to make a motion. Can we table number 40 until we have a chance to sit down with the can-do people and see if we can maybe negotiate?
I'd second that motion, being that I know it's said on already.
On the motion to table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So 40 and 39 are excluded from the vote. Any other questions on 35 to 42? All in favor, 35 to 42, excluding 39 and 40, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Finance, approve items 43 through 50 with one motion.
Second. Questions, comments? Mr. Reba, roll call.
Numbers 43 through 50, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
51, bills.
Second. Questions? Mr. Reba?
Number 51, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on B.
Ayes have it, noting Mr. Maholik's no vote.
Superintendent's agenda, approving items 52 through 61 with one motion.
Some move.
Second. Questions?
Can we do these? Can we pull out?
Pull out one and just one separately.
Sure.
Can we pull out one?
Number 55.
Number 55?
And vote on it separately?
Can we vote on that separately?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need a motion?
You need a motion, eh?
Chris. Did... Was there a motion on 52 to 61?
Yes.
Why don't we do that and exclude number...
Yeah, whoever made the... Who made the motion on that? I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
I'll make a motion. We voted on 52 to 61, excluding 55.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Comments? Mr. Reba?
On 52 to 61, excluding 55, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Number 55, Mr. Reba? Dr. Butler?
Number 55, recommend board deny H.A.E.S.P.A. grievance number 0413-16.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba, roll call.
I'd get it first and then second.
Yeah, we need a motion. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Mr. Reba?
On 55, I'm gonna call a roll call. Mr. Benomo?
Is this a motion at the table?
No, it's a motion to either accept or deny.
Turn it up or down.
If you vote yes, you're denying it. If you vote no, you're not denying it.
I'm yes on denying.
No, this is to deny.
We just said if you vote yes.
Yeah, vote yes, you're denying it. Yeah, it'd be yes, Murray.
Please, let's... Yeah, let's make sure what it is before, because...
No, I think... Yeah, could you clarify then? Because I think I'm confused now.
Okay. So, the motion is to deny the grievance? So if you vote yes, you are denying it. If you vote no, you are not denying it.
Yes.
So, you're accepting the... Yes. The grievance will go back to the union if there is a no vote.
No.
If there's a yes vote, it will continue to arbitration. If there's a no vote, it will go back to the union.
Correct, Mr. Schlesser?
Yes.
So if we're not in favor of this, it's a no vote, correct?
Correct.
So I still want to vote wrong? Okay. Thank you.
No.
Mr. Chapman?
No.
Mr. Fume?
No.
Mrs. Kay?
No.
Mr. Maholik?
No.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Scarsella?
No.
Mr. Zola?
No.
And Mr. John?
No.
Motion fails. Eight to one.
Prove items 62 through 74 with one motion.
I'd like to make a motion to table number 69 in light of just denying the grievance on number 55.
We need a second on a motion to table.
I'll second it.
On the motion to table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed on a motion to table? Ayes have it, motion to table passes for number 69. Any questions on 62 to 74?
Mr. Reba, roll call.
62 to 74, excluding 69. All in favor, say yes.
Aye. Yes.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
If I... Dr. Butler, if we could maybe at this moment, see if anyone is here that...
Absolutely.
Are teaching.
Sure. It's my pleasure to welcome and acknowledge by having any... Any audience members here that were recently... Or excuse me, recently just appointed to a position in the district. If you would stand so we could recognize you and acknowledge your appointment. And I would say, Mr. Maholik, that these are two individuals who have served the district faithfully for many years. And they're going to be great teachers and great assets to our school district. And as a superintendent, it gives me great pleasure to welcome these two individuals to our district, and the others that are on the agenda who could not be here this evening as well.
Yeah, if I just may take one moment, because I specifically know number 72. And this is such a... Just a real tremendous young woman who I know is going to be a great teacher. Here's someone that has been passed over several times, Jessica. And never did she come and complain, never did she bicker, never did she criticize or call it anything but... I know there might have been someone that was more qualified at the time. And tonight's your night. I think your husband's with you. I am so proud to be a board member tonight and to approve you for this position because it is so deserving. I know you're going to be a phenomenal teacher because you've worked so hard for tonight. So, Merry Christmas, I guess, right? Because it's a big, big night.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to everybody that's here tonight.
Dr. Butler?
All right, approving items 75 through 80.
Second. Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
On 75 through 80, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to 17 on 77.
Ayes have it, motion passes, noting Mr. Zola's abstention.
And finally, new business number 81, recommend board approve Casey Flame as a secondary English teacher. By the way, this is a replacement position for...
Second. I have a question, Dr. Butler. Where is this young lady going to be assigned to?
This candidate will be assigned to Drum's Elementary, Mr. John.
Thank you. Questions, comments, and any other board members?
Just the same thing, if Casey might be here. I don't know if she is.
I should say Drum's Elementary Middle, Mr. John, to be exact.
We know where you meant.
All right. And I don't think Casey is here this evening, but I did have the honor and privilege. Probably one of the most enjoyable, if not the most enjoyable, part of this position is to be able to go to a person who's worked hard to earn their degree and their certification, much like the two individuals that were just acknowledged and offered them a position in the district. And Casey, needless to say, was ecstatic and thrilled. She'll be a great addition to our district and fills a much-needed void down at Drum's.
Wonderful.
Mr. Reba?
Number 81, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
And finally, 82, recommend board approve the resolution regarding a tax assessment.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Number 82, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion passes. Yes, that's a good point. We gotta stop that as well. We got a table number 78. That's attached to... That's attached. Number 78, we need to table.
We already voted on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rescind it.
Rescind it, right?
We'll rescind that vote and then we'll have to revote tabling 78 and approving 75 to 80 without 78.
Can we have a motion to rescind the vote on number 78, please?
I'd make a motion to rescind number 78.
Second.
Second. All in favor of rescinding 78, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Thank you.
Do you know what's next?
Do we need to table 78?
Yeah, you've got to act on it.
As if it was rescinded.
Yeah, you need to table.
It's not approved.
Right.
I'd like to make a motion to table number 78.
Second.
Did you second, Mr. Fume?
Questions?
Mr. Fume seconded it.
Mr. Reba?
On the motion to table 78, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
At this time, anyone in the audience may talk on any item that's not on the agenda, limited to a period of three minutes. Does anyone want to approach the podium?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
What, can I just... I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You weren't going to say anything.
Sorry. One moment, I just... Because I see my... Our good friends from Nutrition Inc. here. I want to just remind everyone, I know you've done a wonderful job getting the word out there that we are having our annual senior citizen breakfast. It's a wonderful event and amazing opportunity for us to give a little tiny, 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 you know, piece of our appreciation back to our seniors. our appreciation back to our senior citizens, it's open to everyone, it's a joyous event, a great way to kick off the season, and I just wanna, if we can get the word out there even more, so, and again, I thank so much Nutrition, our administration, and our staff for supporting this, this will be year five, I believe. So it's phenomenal, thank you. Oh, six, that's great.
Very...
Thank you.
Could somebody turn his mic off, please?
Motion, did you turn?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Second. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.